Yes, we are, Commissioner.
Thank you. All right, I'll sit here. First, call the order. Mr. Trainer, sir, if you would. Sir. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Nepper?
Here.
Commissioner Lawrence? Commissioner Savoy?
Here.
Commissioner Trainer?
Here.
Chairman Martin?
Here.
Would entertain any additions, additions to the agenda? I move. Okay. Approval of County Board meetings. They were meeting on 15th, 2024. Motion. Okay, so moved, okay, I'll support. I've got this fan blowing there. Support? Okay, got it? All right. Got support. And a motion to accept the regular board meetings as presented, any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, motion passes. Correspondents proceed, page 12 in your packet.
I'll move, we accept the correspondence and forward them as appropriate.
Thank you. Support, motion and support to forward these five correspondents as presented. Any discussion? All is in favor? Aye. Post, motion passed. Public comments. If anybody wants to come on up here, feel free to state your name and whereabouts in this wonderful county you're from. We have three minute limit and 15 minutes per. Like a better word, subject. Now, do we have a red one up there?
The microphone is now in the middle of the room, so you guys sort of need to talk into that little disco ball up there.
Oh, cool. Congratulations.
Really.
You're the first to do that.
Hi. I'm, I've met you all before, Lori Miller from Neveish Island. And we're back after a nice summer vacation. And we still need, desperately need a better ferry schedule. And I know when we first started coming, you said that you didn't really have much involvement with the UPTA Board, but you do. And Jim has pointed out some of these things. But the Articles of Incorporation, they imply, and I left a copy for Jim, to me, they imply that you do have involvement. So you might want to look at those, the Articles of Incorporation for the UPTA Board. And I can email you those two later. Also, you appointed the director. You appoint three of the board members. You give them some money, the UPTA Board. And you have your minutes, their minutes, I should say, going to, you know, the county commissioners. I don't know if you ever read them. And, but I haven't seen most of you at the meetings. But the, there was a set of minutes recently that was very inaccurate and very not incomplete. So with that kind of operation, I'm very concerned about our ferry schedule and that we will not get a better ferry schedule to support all the things that we need to support, primarily education. For, for me, primarily education. So another thing I thought about was, have you ever thought about doing like a survey on the board members? I know Mr. Shackleton said one time, when the last board member was nominated, and I don't have a problem with her, but you know, there's something to be said for consistency. And there is, I know, I've been on many boards. However, if you have five board members that are consistently inactive and afraid to ask questions or make comments or whatever, that's how we got to where we are today, with a reduced ferry schedule. So I just wondered if you had ever thought of, not just for the UPTA Board, but maybe have some online survey once in a while for, you know, how the board members are doing on various boards? No, no, it's just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Phyllis Reed, I'm a long time. I have year-round residence on Neveish Island, and we've been coming there before that for good 20 years. I wanted to thank you for giving us this opportunity and to let you know that we really, that we, our islanders really care about our island. We remodeled our community center with the help of the Sioux Township. We put a lot of, of love and effort from all the islanders into our island. What we haven't done well was let you know that we're there. So my point is to let you know we're there. I'm a president of Neveish Island Improvement Association, but more important, I'm an islander. And we have some concerns and we appreciate the fact that we feel like people have been listening lately and would really like to encourage you to do more. I noticed in your packet, you have something that says long-term goals, creating lasting solutions. That's what we're worried about. Island sustainability, islands die. They die because they don't have support. We don't support any employment other than an eight-hour day. We don't support anything for education except for getting to the school and back again. But none of our students could be in band because they can't attend an after-school band concert. It can't be in choir because we can't have specials, and so they aren't allowed to attend their own, they're not allowed to attend their school functions. That has nothing to do with people that are interested in sports. We're talking about after-school programs that people come and the kids prepare for. Our islanders can't attend. That's a real problem for education. It's a real problem when you only support eight hours of employment, really. Well, it's 12, but it's 6:30 in the morning until six or seven, depending on the time of the year. But we have shift work, we have student that had to leave the island because she couldn't go to school and have a job, part-time job, because she couldn't get back home again. Those are real common problems. And we've had two families, and well, three if you count my children, that would love to come and move in and support the economy, but they can't because, in this case, both these other families and myself have children and they, and education is the most important thing besides employment. So I would encourage you, when you're talking about long-term goals and you're creating lasting solutions, we need a lasting solution for island sustainability. And if we keep going down this way and getting reduced and reduced, it becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy where we can't do something because we don't have a ferry that goes at night. And then they say, well, you don't have the ridership to take a ferry at night. How can we if we don't have one? You know, and it takes time to build that up. So I would like you to remember that Neveish Island is here and where you really need help in creating long-term solutions for island sustainability.
Thank you. Any other? Like a public comment? Anybody in cyber land?
No public comment.
Anthony, no hands up?
There is no hands up.
Okay, thank you. All right. Hearing none, then I will declare public comments closed. Administrator's report.
Just the regular monthly reports from the Health Department, Veterans Affairs and the Recycling Quarterly Report, which is obviously only quarterly. The courtroom, Circuit Court courtroom ceiling should be done by tomorrow. It's looking really good, they've been doing a great job up there. Good crew that's working on getting that updated.
Thank you. Next, we have old business opioid discussion.
In the packet, I did put the information on the community assessment that we are able to piggyback with Macon County via MSU and get that up and rolling. We had our initial meeting. This would be, it's going to be a phased approach on this, getting the information. It's just going to take a couple minutes, a couple months to get it out and rolling. They'll do the survey a month for them to put it all together and then get it back to us. So we're looking at next spring before this assessment is completed. That doesn't mean we need to wait to send out any of those monies. We have a couple of options. We could set up that steering committee like we spoke about in the past, and we can use the Health Department's assessment report that we already have on file. It is about 18 months old, but it still has the information in there. And we have heard from constituents that have come to the meetings that what the needs are for the people that are living the substance abuse lives. And, you know, I think if we wanted to, I spoke with Ms. Delinkie, if you recall, she is the Michigan Association of County. She's the lead person on that. She thinks that we could release a RFP, put together an RFP committee and get some of those monies out into the county. You know, I had hoped to get it out by the end of the quarter. But it's just every time we take one step, it's two steps backwards, getting the paperwork and everything together. So we do have a couple of options. If you want to get some of the monies out, we would, at the next month, I could have an RFP prepared. We could establish the RFP committee, and we would make it known that this is just how we're going to start. This isn't going to be an every-year type thing because we do want to put the process in place with all the information that we've received from Matt and the input we've received from the community.
Just trying to think, yes.
I'd like to, I guess, add to that. This week, actually last week, I met with, earlier this week, I met with Sean Baker at Great Lakes Recovery and learned a little bit more about their program as one of the key players in the, in this sector. And I also met with Kevin Kalczuk at my Michigan Medical Center Sioux, and just chatted with him a little bit as well, because I don't think they were at the at that meeting at Sioux High, I don't know if the hospital was, but we talked a little bit about the emergency room being kind of the frontline of a lot of the, you know, the issues with substance abuse. And I also chatted with Administrator Church about this idea that she just kind of summarized. And I, I would personally like to make a motion to move forward with preparing both the, these resolutions to create a steering committee and to release an RFP. And I know it was mentioned perhaps to have the RFP be, I'm not sure if Administrator Church mentioned this or someone else, but have it be released by our Health Department and kind of Minister of Health Department. I don't know if that's been in the discussion, but I think there's general openness from what I've gathered from the, the substance abuse support organizations out there to see some money come out this, this year, or, you know, in the beginning of next year. And then as we receive more information from the, the MSU research, the next round of RFPs could be tweaked to, to meet some of those demands. So I'm not sure if it's an appropriate time to make a motion, but I think that there's no reason to wait. And I know, I think I talked to you, Chairman Martin, about the mix of the steering committee perhaps being two representatives from the County Commission, maybe the two representatives from the city, if they are willing to work with us with their funding. Perhaps three sector representatives from the organizations that work in, in recovery. And then perhaps two people that are going through addiction or in recovery, which would be a nine-person board perhaps, or a steering committee. So that could be perhaps decided later, but that's, that's something that I've been thinking about.
Anybody else have any input this point? Trying to think if this fan here is driving me crazy. Anything with a a law enforcement component?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sir. That was my list, I should have either, I guess I didn't know if we need to decide that tonight in terms of the mix, or if that's something that we would prepare for consideration at next month's meeting in terms of the actual seats on the steering committee.
I would think right now everything's pretty fluid. I mean, no decisions have been made, I mean, in, in, yeah, I guess my next question is, RFP for what? What, what are, what are, what are they asking for? Everything that I've, you know, that I've come across has been really preliminary. And I, I do agree, we've got to kind of start narrowing this down. But Commissioner Savoy, did you have any input here?
I kind of agree with you, I don't want to get cart before the horse. I know it's, it appears that it's a slow process, but there's a lot of moving parts to this thing. And I'm not ready for, I don't know if we're there yet. We have to start spending this, we, there's a need for it, and we're mandated to do it. But as far as selecting who's going to serve on the committee, we have two county commissioners. I don't know, I'm not so sure if I agree with two people that's gone through the treatment survey. I don't know the mix yet. I'm not comfortable with the mix yet, that's why. I'm not saying they won't serve on there, who will or not, but I, I'm not sure if we're reached those conclusions yet, as at least I have.
Very good, yeah. And if we went with one city, one county, I don't think that would skin anybody's nose. I just, for me personally, I'd like to keep this in single digits. Because it's, it's going to get tough. And, but, and you had what, a list of nine, Commissioner?
Oh, yes, I'm, that, that's something, I guess, I guess I am willing to amend my motion to, you know, right now we have a template that I believe administration prepared, perhaps to, I don't know if it's something that-
It's just a sample from, from another community that has put theirs together already.
So perhaps my, I guess in my, in my discussions with, you know, follow-up discussions with the organizations that were at the meeting at, that's at Sioux High, a lot of them are saying it's pretty common practice to see an RFP released. And you, this first year, there's a lot of programs that are already in place. An RFP that utilizes the Health Department's language that's, you know, been, been there. We knows a lot of the problems that we're facing, but in a, a one, year one, getting some money out the door to make an impact right now, and then use that steering committee information, I'm, I'm sorry, the, the survey information to continue to tweak that. But, so at the very least, I don't want to see us personally wait, screw around, you know, trying to get a perfect steering committee forever. I would, I'd rather get something established and get something rolling. So perhaps, I guess I would make the motion then just to, is it something we could set up a commission, a special meeting to identify a mix perhaps in the next month? Or?
Looking at my notes here. An RFP to, 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 to where, to what?
An RFP out to the, the local entities that are serving these people. And they can tell us, this, this is, this is our need. We need $500 to purchase Narcan, which that's, that's a bad example, but you can get that.
No, it's fine.
But, and then we can go back, we make sure it lines up with what the four topics are that you can spend those monies on. And if it falls within, then you have that RFP committee, which would be a commissioner, someone from the Health Department, someone from law enforcement. You have to have somebody from the entities that serve them, and you have to have the people that are living the life. And then you show them, this is, this is what we think, this is what we can spend the money on. They would deem if it's appropriate or not, they would make a recommendation back to this board. And then the board could say, yes, we agree to this $500, $5,000, because Great Lakes Recovery has said they need $5,000 to make sure transportation happens so that these people get the services they need. We know transportation is on the list and we know it's in need. So, I mean, there's, there's several pieces to it, but that's what, when speaking with Ms. Delinkie, she thought we could do that because we did want to try to get money out, you know, by the end of the quarter.
Commissioner Lawrence, any, any input here?
Well, I mean, I, I guess, is there any downside if we, you know, don't spend the money right away? Can we spend twice as much next year? And, and I'm, I'm really curious about what other counties and municipalities are doing, what they've found successful. And maybe instead of reinventing the wheel, if we can take a month or two to, to, you know, explore, explore what, what's, what's going on in some other places, and then, and then move forward.
If, if I understand this correctly, then, then we put the RFPs out there, and then they'll tell us what the needs are. We don't have to accept any of them, we don't have to move on any of them. But maybe just get them out there and find, okay, what might work? And in the end, yeah, we're going to have to put that committee together, but I, I don't understand why we couldn't, you know, have some focus points of things that, yeah, no, that sounds really good, that, not so much, that. And then if we choose to go forward, we can. If we choose not, we can go there, because I, I, I think Commissioner Savoy is right, we don't want to put the cart before the mule. I mean, we, we got one shot to get this right. Commissioner Trainer, then Commissioner Nepper? Do you have any ideas or any thing that you'd like?
Nothing, no.
I'm sorry?
Nothing, right, no.
Okay, very good.
I, I guess, um, you know, I, I want to see, to me, if this is funding that's going to be, you know, coming in over the next decade, each year, there is the ability to, you know, I would hope that the funding starts making a difference and we adjust what we're doing on an annual basis to answer the epidemic issue, the opioid crisis issue, better and better, and tweak the RFPs and show successes and, you know, see things happen. So in my mind, like you're saying, getting, getting responses back, preparing the RFP. I guess I just want to see action and us not get caught up just spinning our wheels, trying to think of the perfect group of people to make a perfect plan. It's an imperfect problem that we're going to solve with imperfect response with this funding, but but yes, I did make a motion, if there's no support, I'll work on a new plan for next time.
Okay, so we have a motion to send out RFPs?
Well, I believe my motion was to create the steering, to, to prepare a finalized steering committee plan using this template for next month's meeting and have the administrative, administration bring it back next month for adoption perhaps, was what I was thinking, but if, if that's.
Gentlemen, any thoughts on that, this is the direction we want to go, so I guess do you want, do you want?
I have some support.
Yeah, I was going to say, do you want to?
I don't believe, I don't believe I would withdraw my motion, I would just die if there's no support.
Yeah, I just, I am, I am of that feeling, we need to do something. But that might be a little too far at this point in the, in the method, but I mean, if they have needs that we can meet short-term, as long as they're going to work, but like Commissioner Lawrence said, what, what are other counties doing? But we also have been to meetings where they've told us, you know, we need more coaches, we need transportation, we need job training.
Sober living was also-
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's, there's a lot there already. And, and, and I guess we have to, we have to go at some point. So do we have any support then? I will do this, I will give Commissioner support. Then anybody? Who's going to?
Would that open up for further discussion?
That would, that would open us back up to discussion.
I, I'm willing to, if, if there's not a vote tonight in favor, I will just work perhaps with Commissioner Martin and any other interested commissioners in refining a short-term plan that would be better explained and better presented perhaps at next month's meeting.
And again, Mr. Chapman and I are missing each other. I, I really do think the city wants on board.
May I ask a point of information on that? I know I emailed Administrator Church about perhaps setting up a meeting with the city, with a committee, is that?
Yes, that's what I was working on.
I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah, so that's, yeah, I was just going different channels.
Do we want to reach out to Macon County's counties as well?
I'm hoping to.
I was going to say, wasn't that part of this?
Macon is part of the assessment. Yeah, they're basically in the same spot we're at right now, just putting things together. They do have the committee already established. That's the only further step that they are, they haven't used any of the monies.
That's, that's good to know in itself. Is, is loose anywhere on, on this?
I have not heard.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but as far as like a steering committee goes, I mean, that's, you know, the chair can just point a committee to come back with a recommendation for the resolution, right?
Yeah. Based on?
We get a committee of one, and let's work on it.
Well, I, it sounds like that's, we'll only have one representative there, which, like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that. I have a lot of confidence in any of you for doing that, that's no problem.
I think you're absolutely right about keeping it lean and, and small. You know, a single digit.
Like I just want to make sure law enforcement had a voice, because they sometimes get overlooked. And, and yet, if you look at our corrections and you look at, at our, our law enforcement officers, they are the frontline. I mean, on all this, they deal with stuff that goes on in the jail on a daily basis, like most of us just walk away. So I
I guess when I said to county representatives, I, I assumed it could be staff or administration as well, but my apologies, you're right.
You know, though, but that's not, you know, one of our two is, you know, but then the prosecutor might want on too, but one or the other, we'll see how that goes. All right. So we can table this discussion? Or do we have to vote?
I thought you had a motion on.
Yeah, we have motion support.
And you have to vote for it.
Now we have to vote for it.
Because you went ahead and supported it, yeah.
All is in favor? Aye. Aye. Post? Aye. Nays have it, we will deal with it next month, so, and keep us informed as, if Mac, Macon County goes to the next level or they find something.
We're in the same step as them, because they're, we're going to work together to get this assessment released out to the people that are so that they can get the answers of the people that are living the living through.
Opioids.
Yes.
All right, very good, thank you very much. All right. New business, Resolution 2024-21, Proclamation of Conflict Day, Conflict Day. So moved, thank you. Support, motion and support for the resolution. Page 47 in your packet. We will need a roll call vote with that. Mr. Court?
Commissioner Nepper?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Savoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer?
Yes.
Chairman Martin?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Resolution 2024-22, authorize affidavit affecting real property for a portion of Chippewa County's EDC. Page 15 in your packet. And
I made a motion on that one?
Motion?
I'll support.
And support? Roll call votes, sir?
Commissioner Nepper?
Yes.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Yes.
Commissioner Savoy?
Yes.
Commissioner Trainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Martin?
Yes.
Resolution also passes. Page 58, Chippewa County Veteran Service Emergent Relief Fund Grant Policy.
I would be happy to make that motion. This will be our second year into receiving a grant, and I understand there's a considerable increase this year.
Excellent. Motion? Support? Support? Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, motion passes. Board vacancies. Chippewa County EDC filling reservation. Now, I realize we have two different appointments here, one goes until 2027. And one runs through 2025. So vote again with the EDC. You have a tally sheet on page 60, I believe.
Chairman, which one are you going to fill first?
First one is, is going to be 2027. That would be that would be that'd be Jack Frost, right? Okay, so, uh, the, um, candidates Jeffrey Barrow, Richard Bernhardt, Carmen Minachi, Don McLean, James Parker. And we will, yes, go in alphabetical order. Sorry about that.
It's always the name guy has to go first.
Ready?
Commissioner Nepper?
May I just, uh, say one point of information before I announce my vote on the previous resolution that we passed? Um, just because I actually think it fits. So the resolution to name conflict resolution day in Sault Ste. Marie, uh, October seventeen twenty four, uh, to help people solve disputes and promote a peaceful community, promoting community mediation services. I, I just wanted to say that publicly that, that, that was what the resolution was for and make sure that we help get that out there a little bit because I think it's very important to try to get people to solve uh, things civilly and, you know, through mediation, if at all possible, before they take things to court. But it also, uh, is good to, um, be peaceful and civil as we make board appointments because boy, it's competitive and I did not. That was my segue. Um, so that being said, I spent, uh, quite a bit of time researching and talking to people and, um, appreciate all the interactions with everybody. So for the twenty twenty seven seat for the EDC, I would, uh, vote for, uh, Mr. Don McLean.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Don McLean.
Commissioner Savoy?
Don McLean.
Commissioner Trainer?
Don McLean.
Chairman Martin?
Don McLean.
So, welcome, Mr. McLean, back. Uh, next is twenty twenty five.
Commissioner Nepper?
Um, one other comment, I would invite any of the individuals that reached out to me, um, about these appointments uh, to Paul, if you have any questions or concerns about who I voted for, but, um, I would, uh, like to vote for James Parker for the second, for the twenty twenty five term.
Commissioner Lawrence?
Carmen Minachi.
Commissioner Savoy?
James Parker.
Commissioner Trainer?
James Parker.
Chairman Martin?
James Parker.
All right. And, um, to echo on, um, Commissioner Nepper's, uh, thanks, we had some really good people with really good resumes. Uh, and we do have some other positions in the county that have no applicants that, uh, some of those people could, could absolutely help us with. Case in point, which one? Where we just talked about Kelly on, um, substance abuse disorder policy board, no applicant staff. Um, that, and with us talking about opioids, that really needs to be filled. And there's some good people that we've just talked about today that, that could certainly fill it up. Uh, that being said, though, um, we've got, um, applicant Mark Itrum. We could do unanimous consent on that since there's only one candidate.
Yes.
And motion for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Support, support. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Congratulations. Itrum, you are in. Uh, HPH, we had applicants Thomas Firequest, uh, George Cincella, Chair Tremblay, uh, and only one of them will go through. All right.
Commissioner Nepper?
Vote for Tara Tremblay.
Commissioner Lawrence?
George Cincella.
Commissioner Savoy?
Tara Tremblay.
Commissioner Trainer?
Tara Tremblay.
Chairman Martin?
Tara Tremblay. Also like to thank Mr. Firequest and Mr. Cincella for their service and their willingness to serve. Do appreciate it, but like I said, there are plenty of open seats on, on other boards. If they would like to move in a different direction, that would be great. All right, uh, next. Uh, like I said, substance use disorder policy board for the second order. Uh, that one is empty. Uh, standing committee reports. Oh, um, I'm sorry, go back here. Kelly, did we? What, what were we going to put it back out there for that?
Yes, we'll re, we'll re-advertise. I'll reach out to North Care and let them know that we didn't have anybody. Maybe they have somebody else from this area that wasn't aware, um, that it needed. We'll do some homework.
Okay, thank you. All right, standing committee reports, finance claims accounts, Commissioner Sui, sir.
A regular media Chippewa County Board of Commissioners, finance claims, the committee was held on Tuesday, September tenth, twenty twenty four. This location meeting was called to order by thirty P M. A quorum was present. It was moved by Commissioner Marcus, supported by Commissioner Nepper to approve the agenda as presented. And voice vote motion carried out with so moved.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
No public comment. We did have correspondence, information, no action necessary, moved into the agenda items. Health Department twenty twenty four, twenty five budget contracts and travel moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Martin to approve the budget as presented, including authorization, the health officer's signature on various maintenance and spark contracts, I K equipment and travel with the county allocation on voice vote motion carried out with so moved.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Health Department continue mission statement organizational chart, annual policy review and fee schedules that moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Trainer to approve and authorize Chippewa County department mission statement organizational chart, the policies and the fee schedules on voice vote motion carried out with so moved.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Health Department continue sale of excess assets, a fridge freezer sale moved by Commissioner Nepper, supported by Commissioner Lawrence to prove the sale of the fridge freezer. On the voice vote motion carried out with so moved. Support.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Health Department M O U with E U P I S D for community information exchange moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Nepper to approve and authorize memorandum of un, understanding between the Health Department and E U P I S D to share community information, part of social detriment self, uh, pilot program, grant on a voice vote motion carried out with so moved.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Health Department letter of intent moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Martin to approve and authorize a letter of intent which appoints the Health Department Health Officer as a point of contact, contact on voice vote motion carried out with so moved.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes.
M I D C Public Defender Contracts Legal Services Agreement, uh, two times. It was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Martin to approve and authorize the new legal services contract starting September first, twenty twenty four through September thirtieth, twenty twenty five, should be right.
There's two steps. Remember, there were two that were just for September and then the others are for the full year.
Yeah, you're right. I apologize. The twenty twenty four and October first, twenty four through September thirtieth, twenty five as presented. And voice vote motion carried out with so moved.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Drug court, mental health court coordinator wages moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Nepper to approve the grant coordinator possessions for drug court, mental health court to be placed on non-union scale as long as permitted by the grants on voice vote motion carried out with so moved.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Fifty eighth Circuit Court Drug Court Contracts moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Martin to approve and authorize the Fifty Eighth Circuit Court Drug Court Contracts in Great Lake with Great Lakes Recovery Centers and Premier Biotech incorporation fees as presented on voice vote motion carried out with so moved.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes.
Sheriff's Office. Jail cell block locks moved by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Lawrence to approve and authorize the purchase of four jail cell block locks from sentry security fasteners. And to waive the county purchasing policy on a voice vote motion carried out with so moved.
Support. Motion and support for the cell block locks. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes.
Sheriff's Office was moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Trainer to approve and authorize the purchase of two Colt sixty nine twenty rifles to be paid from the School Resource Officer Special Fund on a voice vote motion carried out with so moved.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Sheriff's Office Storage Training Building Change Order moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Nepper to approve and authorize the, prove the change order for door access and moving data camera and receptacle on voice vote motion carried out with so moved.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Office of Emergency Services F Y twenty twenty five Emergency Management Performance Grant Initial Work moved by Commissioner Martin, supported by Commissioner Nepper to approve and authorize Board of Chairman's signature on F Y twenty twenty five grant as described on voice vote motion carried out with so moved.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Office of Emergency Services, E M T Specialist Advanced Emergency Technician Course and Emergency Medical Technician Course, ten-person rate. It was moved by Commissioner Nepper, supported by Commissioner Lawrence to approve and authorize the two training courses to county EMS personnel for E M T Specialist Advanced Emergency Med Tech and E M T B Emergency Medical Technician. My voice vote motion carried out with so moved.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Office of Emergency Services moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Martin to approve and authorize the surface lease extension amendment between Chippewa County and Briggs Land and Minerals, extending the lease five years now through October first, twenty twenty nine on voice vote motion carried out with so moved.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes.
Information Systems Network Attached Storage Device and Building Security and Access Control for the courthouse, egress doors moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Martin to approve and authorize budget changes for network attached storage project, another budget increase for the building, security and access control due to the county not receiving Mermaid Wrap Grant on voice vote motion carried out with so moved.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Building and grounds, emergency plumbing and flooring moved by Commissioner Nepper, supported by Commissioner Lawrence to approve and authorize bills for Cardinal Plumbing and Heating, Micah's Flooring L L C and Stevens Installation for the courthouse emergency repair. It's on voice vote motion carried out with so moved.
Or motion and support. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Again, building and grounds, basement flooring moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Martin to approve that estimate to replace courthouse basement floor and as described on a voice vote motion carried out with so moved.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion?
I, this one item I, um, met with Administrator Church and hadn't looked at the, uh, flooring that was installed, but, um, I wouldn't mind in having the building committee have a little bit of a bigger role in deciding like on somebody's items, uh, colors and styles and things like that in the future, but it does look, it will look nicer.
Anybody else? All is in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Building and grounds continue, uh, moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Nepper to approve and authorize cabinet purchase from Tri-Coney Building Centers for the equal isolation offices with installation to be determined on voice vote motion carried out with so moved.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes.
Administration Policy three nineteen moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Martin to approve policy number three nineteen overdraft fee policy as presented on voice vote motion carried out with so moved.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes.
Administration Policy three fourteen O P E N Healthcare Retirement and Pension Annual Funding Policy moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Trainer to approve the updated Financial Management Policy three fourteen as amended and presented on voice vote motion carried out with so moved.
Motion and support. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion passes.
Administration Morgan Stanley moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Trainer to approve and authorize administration to work with Morgan Stanley to transfer our open funds from verse to Morgan Stanley on voice vote motion carried four to one with Commissioner Nepper voting nay, I would so move.
Support. Motion and support. Uh, any discussion on this? Yes, sir.
I, um, Ted, my, my, my concerns were primarily related to, um, not, uh, not, uh, uh, not going out for perhaps a request for proposals or looking for additional, um, organizations, uh, consultants, uh, beyond Morgan Stanley, as my understanding that they, we perhaps got their, their information back is as early as twenty fourteen uh, and didn't necessarily shop around. And that's something that I guess I would want to see in the future is even with some of these professional services that we're working with that might not be outside of our purchase policy, but to make sure that, um, we're getting the best rates. Uh, Morgan Stanley, let's say they're at one percent, which I don't know, uh, I'd request that information on what their trade, what their fee structure is for managing this fund, but let's just say they're at one percent, which might be an average, um, that, uh, you know, what if we could get it for point seven five or something like that from a, an equivalent provider? Uh, I did meet with, uh, a couple of folks in my district that are in the financial advising business that would not be able to bid on this just to pick their brains and they did, um, relieve my concerns a little bit and said it looks like, you know, a, a solid pick, but that it would make sense to, you know, in the future be, um, you know, bid things out or, or look around or shop around. And maybe that did happen, um, more than I understood because I am new, but that is it. That's, that's why I voted nay and will continue to vote nay.
Hey, hey, what else?
Can?
Yes.
You should have got an email on their rates. On that same day that you were in.
Okay.
Yeah.
Aye.
And they are, um, versus that point five eight in Morgan Stanley's at three.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, obviously we want the best deal for, for our money, most bang for our buck. Uh, and, and maybe going forward, we take a closer look at that, but based on where we are in financial situation right now, um, and that's why I voted for it. I just, I think we need to do this and then come back. That's it. Might be a whole new board come next January. It's, oh, maybe not everybody, but we'll, we'll see how that goes. All right. Any more discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Administration moved by Commissioner Lawrence, supported by Commissioner Martin to release R F Qs for snow plowing and removal on the voice vote motion carried out with so moved.
Support. Motion and support. Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Post. Motion passes.
Finance, so the move by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Lawrence to recommend approval of the August county bills and payroll, general claims, other fund claims, payroll and health department claims and payroll. August county bills and payroll, general claims, other fund claims, payroll and health department claims and payroll. On a voice vote motion carried out with so move.
Support. Motion and support, any discussion? All is in favor?
Hi.
Post, motion pass.
Uh, we had committee comments, no chairman comments. It was moved by Commissioner Trainer, supported by Commissioner Nepper to adjourn. Meeting was adjourned at six fifteen and moved for acceptance and distribution as appropriate.
Support. Motion and support, except Minister Finance, any discussion? All is in favor?
Hi.
Post, motion passes. Next, we have commission reports on board representative and general comments.
Yes, sir.
Yes, I I seen uh Lori Miller spoke at public comment and she currently left. But what I wanted to say is, to my knowledge, she she made the statement, we get to point the director of of transport. I've been around forty seven years into this year and I don't ever remember we get wait, there's many boards out there, E U P Transport, uh Road Commission, E D C. I'm not aware. Uh, we we get to point a person to the board. I make board appointments, but we don't choose the director. I'm, at least to my knowledge, I've never participated in it. And as far as receiving the minutes, I've never received the minutes that E U P Transport. I'm not saying they're not posted on the county website, but the minutes doesn't flow into our, at least that I've never had them.
Cause I think Pete's been here as long as I've been here, but was he appointed by the board?
That's right. Pointed by, he was appointed by the E U P T A board.
Yeah. In other words, not us.
And that's the same thing with E D C, the Road Commission. We don't point their director. So, so that that's misinformation out there. Um, that we appoint the director so we have more authority over them. We don't, we get to point board members. Like we just did with Don McLean tonight. We get to point him and we're not happy. We don't have to choose them next time. But the directors.
And you've just three counties and yeah, we we only appoint, what, two?
Three.
Three. But it's not half, is it?
Well, I just wanted to clarify that.
So that's, that's um yeah, because a a lot of people are not aware of what we do and don't know the ancillary boards.
May I add?
Yes.
Just, I guess I'm not very familiar with the um I haven't followed this this until recently with the ferry concerns, but I would imagine that Chipotle County, since the islands are primarily our islands and Chipotle County islands, that we have a greater, either a greater duty or a greater uh you know, push from our taxpayers to uh make sure they're represented to the U P to board, because the other two counties lose in that. And I would not have as much of a direct, you know, uh, I guess, push from the residents as we would. So I I don't have any solutions yet, but I do want to learn more about.
Hey, I'm glad. Yeah, I was gonna say.
Got it.
Who's the expert? Yes, sir.
Mine is about the veterans. The disabled vets, the property taxes are covered for them, the ones that are a hundred percent disabled. And now they want to change the rules on that to where the state's gonna run it and not the counties. And if they do that, the vets are gonna have to file income tax in order to get the money back to pay for the taxes. So that's kind of a problem in there. And I've contacted Senator DeMousse's office. And they had me clarify. He wanted me to tell them exactly what I meant about it. And they see what I mean. You're gonna be stepping on them vets that have already given up enough by being wounded in action and they're a hundred percent disabled. Then I have to go get somebody to file income tax for them in order to get the money to pay their property taxes.
Um, Mac has.
Yeah, I forwarded, I forwarded you guys some information.
Yeah.
I think they were trying to uh make a relief for the counties. So the counties weren't seeing that yet. And so it does put the burden on the veterans. I understand.
As as I understood it, they're right, basically go from instead of instead of being property tax forgiven. It's gonna be income tax forgiven or what? The the burden was going to to Lansing instead of to us.
They don't have to pay it in first, but in order to get it from the state, they've got to file income tax to get it. Basically the same thing.
The way I understood it is, right now, the county doesn't get that tax.
Correct.
You know, that's doesn't go into our general fund. With their, with the state's proposal is, the state will reimburse the county for that loss of revenue. That that was the intent of their, the way I understood.
Yeah.
I, well, I may, we'll have to read it again, but I thought they were gonna have the veteran pay their taxes to the county. And then the way the veteran could get it back is filing his income taxes or her income tax. So I don't think we would get reimbursed from the state. I think the veterans is how I read it.
Veterans get reimbursed from the state, is that what you're saying? Is what the proposal is?
Yes, that they pay their taxes to the county into the entities within the county. And then, once they file their income tax, then they get the reimbursement.
It won't make sense. Senator DeMousse is gonna take it to the floor. Hopefully I'll get a response to that. We'll have to see how how they're gonna take care of that.
And I can, and I can see why Mac would certainly be for it, because they're fighting for counties. And and that's a big chunk of money. But I also see Lansing not wanting to to pay more either.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, that's, that's, that's feel-good legislation for them. But we're the ones uh holding the empty bag.
We gotta stick up to them.
Unfunded mandate on the counties.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Definition of unfunded mandate. Um, but yeah, we absolutely cannot leave our our veterans uncovered. And they've, they've got to be protected.
I have. Yes, sir. I approached, uh, you know, we're at the, at the U P Works meeting there um and inquired about with the opioid money, does they have any programs for specifically for recovering addicts and alcoholics to to re-enter into uh, you know, sober living and 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 get back out into society? They don't have anything currently. Um, but they were receptive to the idea of looking into that um to that segment and 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 are I'm hoping they'll recognize that as a, as an unserved portion of our community. And if they might, if, and and I pointed out with all the communities in all the counties with this opioid money, you might get a contribution from all, you know, from a county to run jobs program specifically aimed towards those folks that are having those challenges, getting back out into society. So trying to think outside of the box with the, with the opioid money rather than just send a check, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Well, there's
I mean, everybody needs gas. Thanks to my own gas, but you know, I'm I'm thinking more long-term and, you know, jobs.
Um, any other? Um, my only comment is actually piggyback to yours, uh, cause I got a phone call from Michigan Works in Marquette and um in in in, I I believe they're right. Obviously, if you don't have a job, you're gonna end up homeless. You're you're in them, but you're gonna end up probably committing another crime. Um, so obviously, employment is is huge. Um, the discussion though lean more towards, well, where Marquette will help you. Um, and and no, thank you. But from that, I did draw this. We could maybe pull into, is the Michigan Works office here that I believe is still open, correct? So um maybe stay local, think local. Uh, we don't have to deal with Marquette if we don't want to. Quite frankly, it's our money. Uh, but people need job skills, especially and it's doubly hard for them to get a job, because they gotta check that box. We never want to check. You've been arrested for something other than just speeding violation. Nobody wants to check yes. Because the unfortunate part is many times you do that, you're going to circular file, which which really isn't fair, because everybody makes mistakes.
Not everyone addicted to those has been arrested.
True. So. Yeah, it's committed.
Doesn't apply.
Um, so I think we got a lot of different directions to go in. I think Commissioner Savoy's right, we need to and like I said, we got one shot to do this. Let's get it right.
You know, I gotta say, I gotta compliment new commissioner Nepper, you know, your, your thinking. Bringing new ideals and I compliment you for that. I just don't think we're ready to pull the trigger yet, but we're close.
Well, I'm okay getting, getting knocked down a couple of times, learning a little bit.
I want some trust with your ideals.
Thank you.
I like it, because he does his homework.
Yeah.
So, teacher, that's perfect, right there. Oh, I'm sorry. I have trouble saying retired teacher. Yep, so um I'm gonna say it again. That sounds great. I would entertain that motion. Support.
Support.
We're adjourned.